The council meeting back to order. And our next item is item number five, mid-year budget review and adoption of resolution to adjust the fiscal year 2023-24 budget. And we have Yulia Carter here, who will give us the presentation.
Madam Mayor in City Council, I'm Yulia Carter, Assistant City Manager. So the item before you tonight is review and adoption of resolution to adjust the fiscal year 2023-24 budget. So throughout this presentation, we'll briefly talk about mid-year objectives and methodology. We'll also discuss general fund revenues, expenditures, and fund balances, and discuss the other funds' revenues, expenditures, and fund balances as well. Before we dive into details, I just want to say, we'll start by saying that this mid-year report is less than ideal, but it's not catastrophic either. So we unfortunately see some reductions in revenues. We see that some revenues are not going to meet the budget targets that we set before the year, so they need to be reduced. Specifically, operating general fund revenues are down by 2.2 million. That's about 5% of the adopted budget, mostly due to VLF revenue reductions and also sales tax reductions that we will discuss later in the presentation.
Can I, I'm sorry, can I just interrupt you for, is it possible to get our monitors working? So, because it's really hard to see that small.
Just push the power button in the lower right corner.
Oh.
We tried, we tried that, now it's on. It's on the bottom.
Yeah, I see the, yeah.
Under here. Thank you.
Oh, where is it?
Ooh, there is the button.
Maybe it's, the sinus there, but.
That's much better than squinting.
Okay, thank you.
It'll, it will turn on. You, please share.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, Yulia.
Sure, no worries. So the general fund revenues are down by 2.2%. It's about 5% of the adopted budget. The operating expenditures are down 0.6 million, so about 600,000, a little under, or 1.4% of the adopted budget. Capital expenditures increased by 688,000 as a one-time additional allocation or additional transfer out of general fund and designated fund balance towards the Civic Center project completion. And as a result of these changes, the fund balance is down 1.6 million from 10.5 at adoption to, down to 8.9 at mid-year. The other funds' revenues, again, the net decrease in revenues in other funds, about 97,000, that's about 0.2% decrease from the adopted budget, so it's really marginal decrease as a net again. But specific revenues will go down in specific funds, again, you see it in your attachments. Expenditures are up by 2.1%, which is, represents about 4% of the adopted budget, and this is mostly due to additional capital spendings and also emergency repairs in special revenue funds. And revised fund balances in other funds, still projecting pretty strong, combined as 53 million at mid-year. So now, I just want to talk a little bit about the mid-year methodology before we go into the analysis, just to touch base why we do the mid-year budget review. The purpose of it is to analyze year-to-date revenues and expenditures, to review assumptions that we made before the budget cycle started, and if needed, make necessary assumptions, adjustments, to reflect changes in the city's financial condition. Well, typically, mid-year budget review also starts the new fiscal year's budget development process, because we use mid-year analysis to develop the base budget assumptions for the new year. So this is really starting the new cycle for us. So as for mid-year methodology, again, we are using the same methodology as we did in the previous years. We use fiscal year 23-24 second quarter actuals as of December 2023, so that represents about six months of the year. And we project forward through the June 30, 2024. Again, as a reference, in some cases, we see year-to-date actuals because we're doing this analysis in March and not in December, but it's critical and it's best practice to actually look at the six-month threshold for kind of your base analysis for the, for the mid-year. And as part of, well, as additional step in the mid-year budget review, we also look back to the beginning of the fiscal year to review all city council previously approved budget amendments that might have modified the budget throughout the year. So we want to make sure we capture them, all the resolutions that you passed that might have budget implications. And this previously approved, previously approved amendments include, included in attachment number two to your staff report. So we don't need to discuss this again, but again, just for your reference, you can, you can see what we included in the mid-year budget review. And finally, we, as part of our collaborative effort between all departments, we collectively review mid-year revenues and appropriation adjustments, and some of the mid-year budget requests that came from specific departments, as we discussed further. And again, just for the, for the records, what we use as a threshold is a year-end estimates in operating revenues and expenditures in excess of adopted budget or cost center by 5% and 25,000. That's what we consider to be material in nature. So again, we are not chasing down every single line item in the budget, we just look at the material changes to bring forward. So now, let's review general fund revenues, and you can see right here in this table the first bad news of this report. You can see that the VLF vehicle license fee category is going down by nearly 1.7 million. That's quite a significant hit for mid-year budget review. And VLF is actually quite a significant portion of the Pacificus general fund revenues, representing about 11% of it. Your staff report goes into more detail on the complex property tax swap framework that was introduced by the state when VLF-in-lu payment was created by the state back in 2004 with, as a guarantee to cities and counties that lost VLF revenues to get this back eventually, yet over the last several years, due to unique property tax circumstances applicable to San Mateo County specifically, this revenues resulted in shortfall, this category resulted in shortfall of revenues, and the state began backfilling these revenues over the last few years, but yet, again, year after year, you may remember these discussions over the last few years, it's been negotiation with the state, and this year, state has taken the position so far that they do not expect to pay the backfill for the prior year and the current year shortfall amounts. So altogether, this resulted in this significant number of 1.7 million, and that's why you see this mid-year reduction adjustment is needed for this current year. So again, this is evolving issue, it's not, we do need to adjust the budget for the mid-year, but we will continue closely monitoring it for the upcoming budget development process. And city managers and all finance officers in the county are working together on some unified response to this issue and this crisis. So we will continue monitoring this issue closely, and we'll probably have additional discussions as the situation evolves throughout the budget development process. So the next adjustment we've made is a business license tax increase. So again, it's only 50,000, but it's a nice increase percentage-wise of almost 9% of what we budgeted originally. And I want to highlight, again, this increase reflects some efforts made by staff and HTL to identify businesses operating without business license, bringing them to compliance, and providing additional education to the business community on this matter. So the second bad news of the report is a reduction in sales tax. Again, you can see between sales tax and measure Y revenues, quite significant hit, it's about 470,000 reduction between the two. We do, we did receive these projections from HTL, our third-party consultant, sales tax consultant, we recently, before the mid-year, I think it was February, when we received the quarter, the last quarter that was available from the state as of September 2023, so, and they revised the projections that they originally gave us for the budget. And again, the reason for this is apparently all the, all nine industry groups are down on the sales tax, again, county-wide, it's not the city of Pacifica issue, it's just overall the sales tax is down. But again, the new, good news is that the new quarter, the calendar year end as of December 31st, 2023 should be available in the next few weeks. So hopefully, fingers crossed, that some of these projections will normalize and will include obviously the most updated data for the budget development process. So again, we'll keep you informed how it evolves once we get more information. And again, a little bit, a little piece of good news again, the TOT revenues are up by roughly quarter million. Again, this is nice increase, reflection of, well, overall recovery of hospitality businesses, industry, and also again, represents some of the work that was done over the last year, chasing down the short-term rentals compliance, tax compliance, bringing them to compliance, and making some of this short-term rentals pay back taxes. So it's not really trend moving forward, but it represents also some of the back taxes that were paid. Another, again, positive trend and great news of the report, that the other revenue category is projected to increase by 230,000, that's a significant increase of, well, you can see 27%, and this is primarily due to increase in investment earnings strategies that we've done over the last year, and again, you probably remember us reporting it to you, we started, initiated some of the investment strategies through certificates of deposits, and now starting to receiving some of those revenues. And charges for services reduced by 616,000, here it's about 7.7% reduction, and this is mainly because of the 800,000 budget decrease in planning cost reimbursable services fees. Again, this is a little bit confusing because we, we actually doing some accounting changes how we recording cost reimbursable expenses and revenues moving forward. So the change that I'm describing, 800,000, is a net zero neutral to the budget, so you will see the corresponding, corresponding reduction on the expense side as well, and it will just bring us a little bit closer to the actual activity level that we anticipate for the year, and will be easier for us to start recording it more accurately in the next year when we build the base budget. And the reason why you don't see 800,000 here, because it's, again, you see the net category here, and we also experience some of the additional positive trends in SWIM and D-CAM program revenues, so that's what lain into this total number. So on expenditure side, again, the, all this reduction services that you can see, it's all related to a reduction in playing cost reimbursable revenues, so that I just described, so 800,000, and transfer out to capital, this is our capital contribution towards Civic Center, again, we'll discuss it a little bit later as well. So now, over the next couple slides, we'll go into details of the actual recommendations in the general fund that we are asking you to approve as part of this mid-year adjustment. So this slide here is a position control changes. So we grouped them all together, none of these changes have budget impact in the current fiscal year for various reasons, either this position is already budgeted on a limited term and they're already included in the payroll, or the recruitment that will be completed by the end of the fiscal year, or maybe even after the fiscal year, so the budget impact is not going to be recorded in the current year. But again, since we're talking about position control changes, this is significant structural changes moving forward for the upcoming budget development. And you can see that at least the first few categories remove the limited term designation. So again, you probably remember, we've discussed this in the last, over the last two years, we funded quite a few positions through ARPA funds on temporary limited term basis, and that was significant boost and help for, to increase our operational capacity for the city, but now we are on the end cycle of this limited term. And as you can imagine understandably, well, most people want job security, so halfway through the assignment, they start looking at some opportunities elsewhere, and some of these positions are now either vacant or about to become vacant, and already, employees already given notices for other opportunities. So again, we discussed internally that it would be a great opportunity for us and kind of low-hanging fruit to increase this organizational capacity by considering making this position permanent. And that applies to the HR analyst position in HR, record clerk position in police department, community services officer in police department, and assistant planner in planning department. All these positions were funded by ARPA funds, again, no fiscal impact to the current year's budget, because these positions are already funded and portion of our payroll, so essentially by making them permanent, we are just continuing budgeting them in the base budget moving forward. The last two are similar, but a little bit different. So the senior accountant position was also created as a limited term position last fiscal year, and was approved by council, but later we came back to you and asked to unfund this position and move the funds towards the consulting services for ERP implementation project. And again, critical needs in the finance department right now, as we are deep, deep into ERP implementation, it's really apparent that we do need additional support for critical daily operations like accounts payable, receivable, payroll, bank reconciliation, and all the quarterly closures, so we can continue on the cycle that we've been on without falling behind. So that's why we are asking to restore this previously approved position as well. And finally, the two overhire police officer positions also requested here because they feel the same goal to address some, well, current recruitment crisis, some existing absences due to injuries and resulting in unsustainable overtime. And also, police department is anticipating some upcoming requirements in the new year, so if approved today, it will take some time to bring this position on board, and especially for police department, it's not, recruitment is never easy, so it will take time, and once these positions are fully onboarded and trained, if and when other permanent positions become available, these replacements will be filled with the overhires. So that's how it works, and will not be backfilled, right? So that's why we call them overhire. So this is position control changes. In addition to position control changes, what we did include in the budget is, well, as I mentioned previously, approved amendments, there is only one for on-call arbitrage service, and again, it's included in attachment two, it's about 95,000 adjustment. And for requested changes, contract services request and adjustments that are presented in the budget forms for your reports, you can see, well, there is only one form that is included in the general fund, it's additional allocation of 36,000 for GS software purchasing implementation in public works department. And, well, if, if you look at the form, you will see that this project also includes one-time project management implementation cost that will be covered by the salary savings this year, so we are not asking to put additional money in it, but just for transparency, we including that cost as well, because it's not just the software package, it's also the cost of actually rolling it out and bringing the consulting help to do this. Well, already mentioned, the planning department cost reimbursable expenditures decrease, with, again, it's not net zero change, no impact to the budget. And finally, capital transfer out adjustment, again, that's our contribution to Civic Center project, to complete this project, for initially on the funded, on the budget that needs, that further described in the budget form as well. So this is kind of the bottom line of the general fund slide, so you can see, you remember that when we adopted the budget, it was adopted as a balanced budget, and we actually showed some structural surplus that you can see here in adopted budget column. And again, unfortunately, due to all the changes that we just described, the budget as presented right now is not quite balanced, so you can see the circled number here in the center, a little bit under 600,000, so that's the difference between the operating expenditures and revenues. And unfortunately, our expenditures exceed revenues, but again, the, the number is relatively small and minor, and again, it's not really catastrophic decrease from, like, from the budget perspective always a percentage. So if we look at the general fund, overall general fund balances projected through the rest of the year, you can see that total ending projected general fund balance is projected at 18.6%, so that's the first circled number in the green column. And of this number, about 9 million is unassigned, again, that's the second circle right here, and that represents about 19% of the operating, operation expenditure, expenditures. Again, the unassigned fund balance is going down, as you see, but again, it's, it's still quite, well, it's still sufficient and still meets the requirements for GFOA minimum reserves. And what we, as you remember, this number that we showed in the previous slide, so the 593,000 that is currently unbalanced, so what we are projecting, proposing is to reduce the previously designated emergency reserve of 10%. And by taking this number out of this amount, the reserve will go down to 8% for the current fiscal year. Again, this is just to rebalance the budget for this current year, we do plan to restore this reserve back to 10% for the base budget, and if any additional projected deficit is projected for the upcoming budget, which may or may not be the case, then we will be talking about service reductions. But again, at this point, I think it's premature to anticipate it, because this fluctuation is relatively minor for the current year. And again, looking at this reserves, you can see the assigned reserves, I just want to highlight again that unassigned fund balance of 9 million meets the minimum reserve requirement by GFOA, which is two, two months of operating expenditures, and in our case, it's on the 8 million, and this is again, in addition to this additional reserves that you can see in this box, the 8% emergency reserve, facility maintenance, compensated absences, childcare, and legal reserves. So all of them except for emergency reserve remain unchanged for the year, which is good news. So now, we are moving on to other funds, non-general funds, they are structured in these categories. Enterprise funds include sewer operations and capital funds, as well as beach parking funds, special revenues, and capital funds include gas tax, REITs funds, drainage, general capital, and, well, quite a few others as well. Internal service funds used to account for financing of services provided by one department to other departments on cost reimbursable basis, in our case, this is motor pool operating and replacement funds, dental benefit funds and risk management, including workers compensation and general liability funds. And finally, debt service fund is self-explanatory, used to account for resources, used to account for payments of principal interests on debt administration. So as I mentioned before, we project 97,000 net reduction in revenues in other revenues, mostly due to some adjustments that we made, that you can see here in front of you, to different fund revenues, and again, some of this, they're spelled out in the staff report, but the most of them just bringing it closer to the budget reality as we're projecting it through January, I mean, through June 30, 2024. And on the expenditure side, we are showing 2.1 million increase as a result of previously, well, approved council amendments, and as well, budget requests described in attachment three. So again, most of this increase you can see in, in special revenue funds, they are related to either additional capital spendings or emergency repairs, so it's actually not unusual to have additional, to use fund balances for, in some of these funds, when, when they are designated for capital improvements. And again, if all changes that we've discussed so far are approved by you tonight, the And again, if all changes that we've discussed so far approved by you tonight, the, here's the projected citywide fund balance summary. Again, it's a condensed summary, so more detailed summary is presented in attachment six that you can see by each individual fund. And the city currently has thirty-one funds, so it would not fit on one slide, so it will be a little bit difficult to display, but you, again, you can see it in attachment six. I also want to highlight that this are not cash balances. So these balances right here include some capital assets, especially in wastewater and motor pool funds as well. And again, just to summarize the mid-year adjustments, general fund, the operating revenues is reduced to, by two point two million, operating expenditures down by point seven million, capital expenditures up by point seven million as a one-time additional allocation to Civic Center. And then designated fund balance is down as well to eight point nine million. In other funds, revenues down by point two percent or ninety-seven thousand and expenditures are up by four percent increase over the adopted budget. And overall fund balances are projected at fifty-three million at mid-year budget review. This brings us to recommendation slide. I am not going to read this all again, but again, we're asking you to adopt the city, the resolution to amend the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four operating and capital budget as presented by staff and this presentation. And again, I want to highlight that the mid-year budget report is a segue to new budget development process over the next month, several months, actually. So at the next council meeting or over the next few council meetings, we will be bringing the budget calendar and some preliminary budget strategies to you. And with that, I am happy to answer questions. And we also have staff in the back, so for specific budget recommendations.
Questions?
The available as well.
Thank you. Tiger?
Thank you, thank you, Yulia. My question is, as the recommendation is that we shift out of the undesignated fund balance, the approach is that we would make it whole in the coming year and that would be accounted for in the base budget when it comes back to us for the coming fiscal year, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
And this is why we have emergency reserves. So any budget fluctuations will be covered easily by that unless it's something catastrophic that is projected to have effect over the next few years like pandemic, which is not the case.
Sue?
I just wanted to double check with you about the reserves on that same topic. Did you say that the recommendation is two months of operating expenditures, which is for us slightly less than eight million dollars?
Yes, so GFOA set, well, a policy or recommendation to city governments to maintain the minimum level of reserves, which is two months of operating revenues or operating expenditures. We've been using operating expenditures. So in our case, it's slightly under eight million. So what you see here, even with this reductions, we are at nine million in designated fund balance. And plus, we still have remaining emergency reserves and all the other reserves that you can see. I was trying to go back to that slide, but.
Yeah, that would be helpful, thank you.
Back, back, back. Yeah, here, this slide. Thank you. So you can see the unassigned fund balance reserve is a little bit, well, shy of nine million dollars, but in addition to that, you, we still have eight percent reserve for emergencies, it's four point one million. And all the other assigned reserves remain untouched. So we are meeting and exceeding the minimum reserves requirements.
Yeah, just, just a couple of questions and thank you for the presentation, Yulia. I want to understand the, the sales tax and the measure Y numbers a little bit. So, so I think you said this was mostly till the end of December, but sometimes you're, you're projecting further. So were, were these minus one hundred and seventy thousand and minus three hundred thousand your projections for the next six months?
Correct.
Also?
Yes, so we are using HDL sales tax division is doing, well, helping us with the sales tax projections for the, for the whole year. And it's important to note that there is a two-month lag of the data that we received from the state. That's why we, the most available data right now is through September of twenty twenty-three.
Oh.
So based on that information, HDL revised the projections for the rest of the year. So what you see here is the most relevant, most updated projections through June thirty. This number may change again once we see, receive the next quarter.
Right.
Which is like literally.
So we haven't included Christmas necessarily, which is the spending time, and I've heard January was low, so, okay.
Correct, so, so I, I'm hopeful that the number will be a little bit more optimistic. But again, it won't hurt to reduce this number because it's the most accurate information you have available at the time you're making this decision. But for the new year's projections, we will definitely hoping to use different, different quarter.
Okay, and, and just remind me, so sales tax is money that people spend here in town and measure Y includes a tax on purchases from Pacificans, but that they could be spent elsewhere, right? That's, that's the difference, otherwise they're both sales taxes.
Yeah, it's transaction use tax, yeah.
Okay. And then I, I want to understand the, the salaries and benefits. So I saw the, the number on your slide for expenditures was keeping what we had budgeted. But I know there have been cost savings just because we have a lot of positions that are, that are not filled right now. So do we have a sense of how much, so that, is that extra money that we actually have that, that's not really accounted for in these numbers or, or is it, or does it show up somewhere and I just missed it?
It, it does not show up in the mid-year report, but we do go through this exercise for the projection of the salary savings and what it can cover. If you recall back in July, you adopted the memorandum of understanding with some increases and they are included in attachment two with the fiscal impact that we identified and at that time we told you that we, we want to amend the budget. So we are not asking you to amend the budget because these increases are fully covered by the salary savings. And that's unfortunate, like sad reality of things we operate in it. We, we have people leaving and we constantly recruiting for.
Yeah, it's not a good place to be, but, yeah, but we have some extra money in there.
So that's why, yeah, that's why, when, when you saw all the adjustments in position control, all of this anticipated with the timing of the recruitment and vacancies, we anticipate that there will be no, no fiscal impact this year.
Okay. And then I had asked in one of my questions before the meeting about legal expenses and so I just, and as we go through the next year's budget, I just want to see where that is. I don't remember that line item before. But, so the answer I got was that it's budgeted at about a million three and it's projected to stay on target. But then there's cost reimbursable legal planning work related to development projects and other things. So where, where does that, where do those expenses show up or do they not show up?
So the cost reimbursable expenses are not going to show here and, well, I mean, we, it's part of the eight hundred thousand that we reduced, like overall cost reimbursable.
I'm sorry, it's part of the eight hundred thousand.
It's part of eight hundred thousand reduction that we discussed. So portion of it is a legal expense that we probably not going to realize for the end of this fiscal year. It's just we budget for every potential. And we want to reduce the, or change this practice moving forward. And as far as general legal expenses, yes, you correct. Well, in, in the responses, we, we provided this figure, it's one point three million and we do not anticipate this number to exceed at, at the end of the year.
Okay, thank you.
Mary?
Thank you, Yulia, for everything. Can, can you just explain the vehicle license fee thing? Because here it says they do not expect to pay the backfill. It's just such like broad vague language to me and so can you just explain it?
Sure, why don't I jump in on, on this? Let me start by saying this is a, a very serious issue that San Mateo County primarily is battling with the state about. And it has to do with local property tax conditions and the funding related to school districts in our county. And Napa County is another county that is confronted by this sort of shortfall in, in lieu vehicle license fee. Mono County is another county that's confronted by it. So it's not widespread across the state. The, as Ms. Carter mentioned, vehicle license fee is a significant part of our general fund at about eleven percent. And all cities across the state always relied on vehicle license fee, which used to be tied to registration fees that vehicle owners actually paid to the state. All cities across the state rely on that significantly. In the mid nineties was this thing called the triple flip, which was a mechanism that the state implemented to balance their budget deficit and try to keep school payments whole and borrow property tax revenues from cities in order to do that. And then in one of the flips in the triple flip, pay back the cities. So we're obligated this money back. It's gotten to the point because of the particular circumstances in San Mateo County that for many years now, it's a year-by-year discussion with the state to have them backfill the shortfall amount that's owed. And you've heard me talk about it for a couple of years and each year that backfill payment lags by two years. So this year, we received the backfill payment from, I think, the twenty-one, twenty-two, unless it's the twenty-twenty-one fiscal year of six hundred and something thousand. And the state is in a budget crisis and they, the Department of Finance is taking a hard-line approach that they're saying that they don't think they owe us this backfill money. This is a one point, hmm, one point nine five billion dollar issue over ten years for San Mateo County. That if the state continues to take that stance and doesn't pay what they're obligated to pay the cities, that's the impact that it's going to have on San Mateo County. So it's a very, it's a very significant issue that we're fighting really hard on, actually this, this week. The mayor doesn't know this yet, but she's going to have a letter to sign that will be sent, very strongly worded letter, as we did last year, to our legislators and, and the governor about the importance of this money to Pacifica. So I maybe got a little bit too deep or off track, but is that the explanation that you were seeking or?
No, absolutely, yeah. Thank you so much. I, I need to hear things over and over so I understand it because this is a big one and I need to understand it. And then I need to know what we can do as individual council members or just as individuals to help.
Yes, and so when we finish this letter tomorrow, I'm going to send it to the council members and all the council members can use this letter in your conversations with anyone and everyone with the state that you interact with. Very important issue. And, and our, and our local legislators are, are, are on board, taking it seriously, but it's, it's a tough one with the Department of Finance. The, the one thing that I will say further about this, which I think is important, is as Ms. Carter said, this is why we have our emergency, our, our economic stable, well, I call it the economic stabilization, but our, I forget what the actual name of the reserve is, but it's precisely for unexpected state takeaways or other economic impacts. And the reserve is entirely appropriate to use to, to fill this gap now. And part of that is, is strategic in our conversations with the state too. Because at this point in time, we said, oh, okay, well, we're, we have the shortfall with the state, we're going to, you know, trim services here and save some money and cut here and lay off a person here. Then when we're negotiating with the state, they're going to say, well, you already, you kind of already took care of it, you don't need it, right? So, so we need a hard-line approach about how impactful this shortfall is to the city and, and pointing to that we, we have to use our reserves and fall below our policy level of ten percent in order to do this.
And I know we can't rely on this, but could they possibly increase the funds to us at a later time? And then we would just put the money back in reserves, but could that happen?
So in a, in a future year down the line, you know, when budget times are better for the state, could they, could they pay us back for what they owed us for previous years? Yeah, that, that would be great as, as opposed, I mean, we won't on every year, we need it every year to, to rely on, but if there are some years where we have to use some bridge funding, but we're guaranteed payback in future years, that, that could be a potential solution.
More questions or shall I ask for public comment?
I think public comment. I have some specific questions about the lighting and stuff, but do you want those now?
Go ahead.
Okay, I have a question about, this is in the packet page two, two fourteen, and it's to do with the lighting, signal and street light budget. And I want to understand more about this. It sounds like we need to move fifty thousand dollars from, and this concerns me, tree maintenance to work on lights. I know there's a lot of tree maintenance to be done, so I'd like to understand that better.
Yes, thank you and good evening, council members. Lisa Peterson, Director of Public Works. We are requesting fifty thousand dollars to go to our street lighting program. We do have a deficit in that budget because of the fact, what is talked about in these expense amendments. There is some work now that we are still working with the union, but is considered not appropriate for our staff to be doing. Some of it has to do with more electrical work on streetlights, such as the conversions that happened on Palmetto. Because of that, we do need the fifty thousand dollars. I think as far as the recommendation in the budget, the thought or the amendment, I should say, related to taking it from Fund Ten, this was just a fund that we have that we felt we may have some money in, so it was a recommendation, you know, to tap that because it's needed and we're already in a deficit of that particular street lighting fund.
So the work isn't going to be done by our staff, is it contracted then?
Yeah, so our, our streetlight contractor that we, we put out with an RFP several years ago is St. Francis Electric. They do give us set rates, which they provided when they got the contract at that time. So we do get good rates from them, but it is additional work that we have been giving them in order to make sure that we keep the lights on.
And it sounds like it's going to be an ongoing request next year as well, an additional fifty thousand?
This is, yes, likely. We are continuing to talk to the union, but at this point, yes.
I see. So we don't have tree work that we need to do with that money this year?
We do have tree work. We just, we just felt that we would probably have some additional funds in that budget that we could put towards this because it was the deficit. It is, because it comes out of the, basically it's a street maintenance fund, these are, is, is more maintenance types of tree work, such as, you know, having issues with clearance, let's say, or, you know, things that look like they're going to fall down on, you know, cars. So that, it, it's, it's more of a maintenance type fund that we use in regard to streets.
If I may add, I, I think it's important just to recognize, correct me if I'm wrong. If I may add, I, I think it's important just to recognize, correct me if I'm wrong, Director Peterson, but, so Fund 10 is the gas tax maintenance fund, and, and so it's not, it's not a designated fund just for tree maintenance. It's, it's used for street and road maintenance and minor improvements, and that's what it's limited to be used for. So it's not intended to be just a tree maintenance fund.
I appreciate that additional clarification. You can imagine why, when you look at the language on page 214, it caught my eye because it doesn't say that. So it's street maintenance, which includes trees and lights, effectively. Thank you.
While you're there, the, the next item was about some emergency street repair work for $75,000, and it, it doesn't identify where it is. And I don't know if you, if you know offhand, the members of the public might be interested to know if it's, if some of this work is on their streets.
I do have that information.
I can tell you exactly where some of it is. No, just kidding.
Thank you for that question. So we do have some areas in town. Obviously, we have a lot of bad areas in town, and we are having another big street maintenance project that is coming up this summer for a couple million dollars, so that'll help some of those areas. But what we're looking at are, are some areas that just get continuous calls for our staff. We have very small staff. We've also had some people off on long-term leave due to health issues. So one of the things that the staff had requested was to be able to have a one-time contractor come in and just fix some of these areas that are constant and ongoing for them. It really takes up a lot of their, their time. So, so there are a few areas that are on here. There may be a couple more as well, but, and, and I don't have the specific locations, but the streets, and again, these are, are small spots. We're not doing the whole street. It's just an area that maybe is just constantly having a pothole and, or potholes, and residents are calling all the time, and we're getting lots and lots of complaints about them. So there's an area on Belfast, Fern, Genevieve, Loma Vista, Vallejo Terrace, Beaumont, Bancroft, Ursula, and Keith. Those are the ones that I have on my list.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no more lights, I will send it out for public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this? Seeing none, is there anyone on the phone?
There, there are no raised hands.
Okay, seeing no one who wants to speak on this, I'll bring it back to council and close the public hearing. Deliberation. Tiger.
Again, thank you for the remarkable amount of work that went into this and goes into our finances on a constant yearly basis. I was struck as, could you put that slide back up that shows the, the job positions that we need to kind of reinstitute and elongate into permanent positions? And I was looking at a deficit you don't want to add more money on, but, you know, looking at these and thinking about the planning department, who often catches flak because community would like more robust, this, that, or the other, you know, while they're staring down the barrel of a quarry reclamation plan, a local coastal land use plan, a housing element, and short-term rentals in short order, and we're asking for one position to be made permanent. Thinking about the police department, who, you know, I get to speak to some officers on a daily basis at times when they're just doing their grocery shopping, hearing about the kind of shortages there are in the department. And so we're trying to come up with a plan to make sure our community is safe. And knowing full well that the finance department needs all sorts of help, and despite that is able to churn out, you know, state-level award after award now twice in a given year, it's remarkable. And you throw in an HR analyst position on top of that. You know, I have every faith that when we, when you create the budget this coming year, we'll be able to make whole again the undesignated fund balance that traditionally we keep as robust as we want to, and frankly, that this is the purpose, to make sure that we stay balanced as we go forward. So happy to vote to put into place this part of it and keep it funded, and make sure that we are taking every opportunity to try to augment our staff, which in so many ways and so many areas constantly is working so hard, the ways they're so understaffed. And on top of that, having to listen sometimes too often to folks who think it's appropriate to talk that way to people. So, thank you, and boy, does this look good.
Christine?
I just, yeah, I want to thank you for your work and, and finding ways to, to bring us forward despite the, the losses in, in revenue. So this, this all looks good to me. I'm, I'm ready to make a motion if, if there are no other questions. I did, I did want to point out that this was in the staff report, but not on the screen now. The two over-hire police officers were listed at, at each at 124,100, which seems very reasonable. I, I know we've lost some police officers because the overtime requirements have been too much. And so it's, it's just really important that we increase our capacity there.
I don't see anything else, go ahead.
Okay, I make a motion that we adopt the resolution authorizing the mid-year 2023-24 operating and capital budget adjustments.
I'll second.
Please vote.
The motion made by Councilmember Bowles and seconded by Councilmember Beer passes unanimously.
Thank you, and thank you for all the constant work on this. Doesn't just happen in the half year, so it's constant, thank you. Okay. We're going to move on to item number six, appointments to the Beautification Advisory Committee, Open Space and Parkland Advisory Committee, Parks, Beaches and Recreation Commission, and Planning Commission. And we're, sorry, this, I always need Sarah to, because we do it, we did it, we used to do it differently than we're going to do it now.
Yes, Sarah will explain.
Please.
So, council members, the city has recruited applicants for the Beautification Advisory Committee, the Open Space and Parkland Advisory Committee, the Parks, Beaches and Recreation Commission, and the Planning Commission to fill vacancies due to one expiring term on the Beautification Advisory Committee, two vacancies on the Open Space and Parkland Advisory Committee for one partial term to expire May 2025, and one partial term to expire May 2026, one vacancy on the Parks, Beaches and Recreation Commission for one partial term to expire May 2025, and two expiring terms on the Planning Commission. Recruitment notices were posted on the city website, published in the San Mateo Daily Journal, and published in the Connect with Pacifica and city social media. The application deadline initially of February 2nd was extended three times further to fill out the applicant pool. The city received one timely application for the Beautification Advisory Committee, four timely applications for the Open Space and Parkland Advisory Committee, one timely application for the Parks, Beaches and Recreation Commission, and five timely applications for the Planning Commission. I'll display the list of the applicants under consideration for each committee and commission as the council deliberates. The interviews were conducted by the city council at a special city council meeting held last Tuesday, March 19th. And the city council will now deliberate openly to come to a nomination for named candidates for each of the positions and have the, can start with the Beautification Advisory Committee and bring those up unless council has any questions or directs otherwise.
Thank you. Sorry, does someone have a nomination for Beautification Advisory Committee?
Before that nomination, are we going to take public comment before or after?
Probably back before.
Before, thank you. Is there, so public comment on all of these items before us?
Yes, one public comment period for the committee-commission appointments item.
For, for all, sorry.
For all together, yes.
Okay, sorry, I'm going to open the public comment period. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to make a public comment regarding any of the appointments to commissions or committees? Seeing no one, is there anyone on the phone?
There are no raised hands.
I will now close the.
There is one raised hand.
Okay, I will not close the public comment. Go ahead, Emily.
It is Cliff Lawrence.
Okay, Cliff, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you very much, Planning Commission. And again, I thank you, or city council, I thank you all for your service. I said Planning Commission because that is my focus in my comment. I am concerned that Chairman Hauser be, return to the Planning Commission. I hope that, that is your intention, because I think that of all the people on that Planning Commission, she is so, so thoroughly involved in all the issues and understands it in ways that other people, I mean, you, you hand these people a 2,300-page document, do you really think this is something that's feasible? But she manages it. And I'll tell you, I pray that this is your answer for us this evening, because we, we can't operate without people like this. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Cliff. Are there any other raised hands?
There are no other raised hands.
Okay, seeing that, I will bring it back to council.
I nominate Dan Wells for Beautification Advisory.
Second.
Please vote.
And for Dan Wells for Beautification Advisory Committee, a motion made by Councilmember Beckmeyer, and, sorry, Mayor Protem Beckmeyer, and seconded by Councilmember Bowles, the vote passes unanimously.
Thank you. And next to Open Space and Parkland, and there are two terms, a partial term expiring May 25th, and a second partial term expiring on May 26th. So if you'll indicate who you'd like and for what length of term.
Should I do that?
No, Sarah, sorry.
Can, can you remind us, some of, some of them said partial or either, but I, I can't remember, for example, Michael Kahn, if he was interested in the one year or the two-year?
I don't recall anybody specifying that this round.
No.
Alternative.
So if there's no second, the motion fails, and you can start a motion anew.
Well, so usually we go through and count up who it is we... So I would certainly make a motion for Michael Kahn and Aaron Reeve if there's no second on Michael Kahn and Sally Traynor.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Big Stick, Michael Kahn for which term, and?
I would do Michael Kahn for the expiration 26 and Aaron Reeve expiration 25.
I'll make, I'll second that.
So please vote.
And the motion was made by Councilmember Big Stick for Michael Kahn for the term to expire May 2026, Aaron Reeve for the term to expire 2020, May 2025, seconded by Councilmember Beer, and the vote is four in favor, one opposed. Mayor Vodder lost is opposed.
Thank you. Moving on to Parks, Beach and Recreation. One partial term expiring May of 25.
I move to appoint Peter Banks to one partial term to expire May 2025, the Parks, Beaches and Recreation Commission.
And is there a second?
I'll second that.
Please vote.
The motion to appoint Peter Banks to Parks, Beaches and Recreation Commission made by Councilmember Beer and seconded by Mayor Protem Beckmeyer, that motion passes unanimously.
Okay, and moving on to Planning Commission, need two full four-year terms expiring March of 2028, and, yes?
I'd be happy to make that motion.
Go ahead.
First of all, as I'm making the motion, I want to say that I could not agree with Cliff Lawrence more. Watching Samantha Hauser as a Planning Commissioner, let alone as the chair, has been extraordinary. And especially after last Monday night, watching the way she navigated that meeting and knowing blessed well the kind of inquiry she does to make sure that this community is thoroughly and well-heard, and that as she is entering any discussion with staff, she does her homework to consider how that conversation might go. We have a truly extraordinary asset, and of course, I am happy to make a motion to reappoint Sam Hauser to Planning Commission. When it came to the other person I have in mind, it was hard, because after I went through my thought process, there were two whom I gladly would have chosen between. And I talked it through with one of my fellow council members, just so that I had somebody to bounce my own thoughts off of. And while it was really difficult to decide between the two, the other nomination I'm making is for Chris Redfield.
I'll second.
And please vote.
For the motion made by Councilmember Big Stick for Samantha Hauser and Chris Redfield for full four-year terms for the Planning Commission, I think I heard the second by Councilmember Bowles, is that correct?
Beckmeyer.
Sorry, Beckmeyer, thank you, by Mayor Protem Beckmeyer made the second. And that passes four in favor, one opposed, Councilmember Bowles opposed.
And can I just say, that was really hard. I, I wish that there was like three open spots, because I honestly think that Chris and Marge could really balance each other out, so it was really hard.
Agreed.
Agreed.
And we always tell everyone when we're interviewing that there will be additional positions open, and we are always sorry that people are not selected and that we can't select everyone, but please apply again, and thank you for the time that it took you to do that. So, thank you. And it is 10:15, and we are adjourned, thank you. Thank you.[1756.69]